Hello and welcome to another Board of Education Meeting Recap, this time for the month of May. I'm JD Harden, your host, joined here by Superintendent Mary Elizabeth Davis. Welcome, Mary Elizabeth.
Thanks JD, and thank you for joining us today.
It's hard to believe we're in the month of May. I mean, this is the last month for our students and of course, a lot of our staff members. This is the last month of the school year, you know, as we started on this journey back in August. And what a year it's been. And I'm not talking about just because of the last two months, which were impactful and significant in a lot of different ways. But this year has been incredible for all of our students and staff, and of course, our leaders and our community, as we've accomplished a lot. And we've accomplished a lot over these past two months. And our board members continue to accomplish a lot. And they did so in this last meeting for the month of May. And let's get right to it. The first thing that we were able to share with them, as we've done our previous two board meetings with them in this remote environment, is a continuity briefing. Now, this is a highlight of all the hard work that takes place across our district. Mary Elizabeth, I know there's several highlights you'd like to point out that were shared as part of this continuity briefing.
Yes, thanks JD. This continuity briefing has become really essential as a mechanism to communicate broadly to our community, all of the systems, the processes, and the really the different pieces of work that have had to be constructed during this remote learning and operations time period. We are able to really capture the coordinated and synchronized effort of all divisions and all schools as we seek to have a seamless and sustained transition during this COVID-19 chapter. And I would really welcome any viewer to visit the full briefing on our district website so that you have an opportunity to get a glimpse into just how rigorous the work has become in order to support students, support employees, and keep families connected to our school system.
And it truly is remarkable what has been able to be pulled off over these last several weeks. I'm really grateful that, as always, that we go beyond just, just the curriculum and all of the different campaigns that have been kicked off to make sure that students and families are still engaged and healthy. And I'm just really grateful for all of the hard work that has been put in and all of the creativity that has gone into it as well. And I'm really proud of this board for, for remaining true to our, our core beliefs and commitments. And it's really been amazing to see those played out in such a new and innovative way that we never imagined. So, thank you to everyone from every level. It's been really amazing to watch the teamwork.
Dr. Davis, I'm just, again, as you present every time, I'm just blown away by the hard work that has gone on at every level. And as I've had conversations also with friends who have children in other districts, I'm just reminded at how just above and beyond our school district has gone in every area to ensure that our children were still provided an education. And I'm just so thankful for every single person in this district who has worked to make that possible, because I know it's truly a team effort. And I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm so grateful as a board member.
And JD, we have to transition right from that briefing into some discussion about what summer and the start of a new school year can look like. And in doing so, we really talked about some summer optimism. We have graduations that have been scheduled for late June with a backup plan of late July. We are still optimistic that there can be senior week activities the week before our graduations in June. And we really are looking forward to an opportunity to have a summer learning recovery on campus experience for any student that's at risk of retention for the following school year. Now, all of our students who have not been able to connect during this time period and have incompletes in their fourth quarter grade, well, we're going to have opportunities for those to make up that work and make up those misconceptions when we return to school in the fall. And of course, JD, you know that that got us talking about the fall. As soon as the school year comes to an end, we all start looking towards that start of a new school year. And of course, there's a level of uncertainty surrounding us. And so JD, we acknowledge that this is a public health crisis. This is not an education crisis. So, we have a real responsibility to stay attuned and connected to our public health officials and our state and local government officials. You know, we are going to build agile plans that can be nimble enough to be repositioned, no matter what the public health officials deem as most appropriate as that month of August rolls around. We are prepared to start on time in August. August 3rd is our first day of school. And we are optimistic that there can be an on-campus learning component. But we don't know that for sure, because we'll wait for public officials, public health officials to be clear for us. Either way, we will start with a remote learning if on-campus learning is not an option. Now, we've also acknowledged that this remote learning environment has been more successful for some of our learners. And so, no matter what, no matter when, we're able to have on-campus learning at each of our schools, we will continue with a virtual option for every grade level, if that's a family's preferred choice. Maybe it's because you've been more successful, or maybe because there's medical needs that are being balanced with the learning environment. So, as soon as we can be on-campus, we plan to be, as soon as public health officials deem it as acceptable and safe to do so. And for those families who'd like to continue in a virtual environment, we will be rolling out those details in the coming weeks and months. Now JD, it's kind of amazing to think that we'll jump from May all the way till August, but as always, time goes quickly. And we're really in the throes of building out strong plans that we'll communicate on an ongoing basis. So, that took care of our first two items JD. Let me, let me toss it back to you to talk a little bit about our FY21 budget planning process.
Yeah, you know, you know, as we move into this, this next stage, one of the things that has kind of been pushed back a little bit is the whole budget setting process. We had a very, you know, aggressive timeline to get a budget passed well in advance of, you know, the state requirements. And, and part of that large portion of our funding does come from the state. And with state kind of being put on hold, with our state legislator, or legislature, excuse me, kind of putting things on hold, it has kind of, you know, put a little bit of a pause on our budget setting process. However, that doesn't mean we're moving into the next school year without a budget ready and without some contingencies in place to help us through that. And I know that, you know, that becomes a big issue for, for people in thinking about that. And of course, the economy right now does, you know, kind of weigh in the forefront of our minds on, on how that school year looks. But I will say this, our board has done an incredible job of really setting us up to be, you know, in a good financial position right now. Now, again, you know, there are going to be some, some strains that come from the state. But I will say again, that our board has done an incredible job, Mary Elizabeth, of really getting us to a point where we can feel a bit more comfortable, probably a lot more comfortable than some of our, you know, neighboring districts around the state as we move into, you know, kind of what people may feel is an uncertain time as it pertains to the budget.
You know JD, this is really where the experience and stability of our Board of Education reveals itself. You know, we have not been thinking about our FY21 budget just starting right now. Right? This is a process that is ongoing and cyclical every single year. And we had anticipated some state funding shortfalls because of the local Henry County economy growing so greatly. And because we had prepared for that, our Board of Education invested in their reserves last fiscal year nearly $3.5 million. Additionally, we've been underspending at a pace of 2%, which is $8 million unspent dollars in fiscal year '20. And by putting an essential spending-only model in place right now for the months of, of April, May, and June, we are on pace to save another $2.5 million. You can start to see how some real foresight on behalf of our Board of Education to prepare for our coming school year, which really was designed to invest further in our employees, in commit to competitive salaries at every job family. And while those may not be as feasible in these uncertain times, that, that preparation has actually given us great confidence that we'll be able to sustain through uncertain times. So, it was a great conversation by the Board of Education, and they're going to review a continuing spending resolution at the June 8th board meeting, since we will not have state revenue figures provided by our state officials until after that date. And we'll come back with an FY21 tentative budget likely in the month of July. So JD, it was a great conversation, and we also talked about the role that the federal stimulus package, the CARES Act, will play. And we'll be recipients of $5.9 million, and that's another element, the stabilizing our budget right now.
You know, as you, as you really think about, you know, the, the leadership of the board, good stewards of our, your financial, you know, dollars that, you know, we, that are received by the, by the state or from the state, and of course, our community, you should rest easy knowing that our board has the best interests of your tax dollars in mind as it pertains to our students. So, thank you to our board, and thank you for, for your trust in our board to be able to make those sound fiscal decisions. Now, one other process that kind of, you know, got interrupted when, you know, COVID-19, you know, reared its ugly head, was our strategic planning process. And we were on a roll. We were meeting with folks left and right. We had almost 8,000 folks that we had met with and heard from about the things that they desire to move us forward into the next five years. And that's that last piece for our Board of Education. You know, they've, they've had a plan of action, strategic priorities, and they, but all that started on the backs of their core beliefs and commitments. And now, we're waiting for that last puzzle piece, and we're really kind of kickstarting that again to, you know, continue that work, really not restarting, but just kind of picking back up where we left off. And Mary Elizabeth, I know that that was a discussion that Dr. Knowlton, our Chief of Staff, was able to present and kind of give us an update where we are with that.
So JD, how do you really find the right bandwidth for long-range, five to 10-year strategic planning when you're thrown in the middle of crisis response management and very short, very rapid action planning? And so, obviously, the response required of the school system during COVID-19 has been paramount to what we can think about five years from now. But we actually entered into this crisis on the heels of having really deeply heard, listened to, and understood the priorities, perspectives, and values of our community. And I think in turn, it was very essential in guiding the way our organization transitioned into this crisis response. But it is also appropriate for us to continue thinking about the, the future of our organization on behalf of kids in our community.
Just looking at all that, knowing what all the board members have done and how many hours we put in, I just want, that's what a Board of Education is supposed to do, work organically to get better and better and better. But I will tell you, from somebody that was on the board previous to the past three years, this Board of Education, everybody that you're seeing on the screen, has done so much work. And we are in such a great place right now. And like Dr. Davis said, we're kind of in the halls, somewhat halls, of where we were wanting to be. But I'm just so proud of the, the board as a whole and each board member from all the time, for all the time that you committed to transforming the Henry County Board of Education. And just the connectivity that our board now has with our public, that, not that we didn't have before, but that has gotten so much more in-depth and so much more intimate. And I know we need that, and our community needs that. And I just commend the board, you know, for taking the time to do that. And it is exciting to see our next steps. And hopefully, once this pandemic, you know, we can put this behind us, we can get back to the good work, continue the good work and the fast-paced progress. We can do it now, but I promise you, it's much slower paced. So, once all this pandemic stuff gets in the, behind us, hopefully, we can put the pedal to the metal again. So, I just want to thank all the, you know, all the staff for everybody putting that together, and all the board members who put in countless hours to make that happen. So, just thank everyone, and you, Dr. Davis, obviously.
It's nice that we are working as a unified board, and we have a direction now. We're all on the same ticket. We're working for the same cause. In the beginning, you didn't have that. You had bits and pieces, and we were going in every which a direction.
I just want to say to the citizens that how important it, how important it was to this board to walk through this, these uncertain times, to get through it. We are so excited that we had the opportunity to work with all the citizens in this county in order to, to get through this crisis. And I also want to say, this board has gotten better. And I'll say it again, this board has gotten stronger. And it is working stronger, better, and I don't know another adjective to describe it, but I'm excited with the results that we see as a result of this board working together.
Henry County is recognizing how great of a Board of Education and how great of a team this is, that not only was this board invited to present on what we're doing together to unify our governance team and to create and unify our governance team at the State Conference of GSBA, but we have had districts throughout the state of Georgia and the entire United States reaching out to Henry County's Board of Education, asking us, what are you doing? How are you doing it? Can you help our board become more like your board? So, I think everybody should be, feel really proud of that.
And much of what had been structured is very meaningful and relevant. And so, we are going to spend some time in the next couple of weeks really considering how to bring that work back to the forefront of our organization. And we walked down memory lane in order to have this conversation. And our Board of Education has shared their story through a video conversation. And we are really excited to release that publicly. The journey of the Henry County Schools Board of Education is really rich and really, really inspiring. And districts from around the state and around the country are sending members of their Boards of Education to our Henry County Board of Education to learn how to do this work to build a unified governance model. So, we're going to invite you to visit our district website and tune into that conversation and hear the voices of our Board of Education reflect on their journey to create stability, focus, and alignment that has resulted in improved student learning outcomes and a strong, stable organization that to undergo uncertain times. So JD, that is an amazing feature that has just been placed on our website.
Yeah, if you want inspiration, look back at our, that, that video and see where our board has come from and how they've grown over the past couple of years as a cohesive unit. You know, they all had the right intentions, moving in the right, you know, in their own respective direction and benefiting kids, but now they're all working on the same track. And that one arrow, arrow has provided that, that unified governance that we're so proud of, and they continue to be recognized and awarded for. So, thank you for, for sharing that. And again, that is on our website. So, when you get a moment, please take a look at that. Now, we also had several items that were business items that were also covered during our business session later in the evening, that the board takes action on. Those are the action items, if you will, the others just being more informative in nature. One of the things that we did bring up is that we're going to be renovating the current Performing Arts Center once we move into the new Performing Arts Center, which is almost complete there in Fairview. But Josh Malcolm, our Chief Operations Officer, was able to provide an update of the bid tabulation. So, he did, our board did take action on approving a bit, you know, one of the bidding companies to continue that work or complete that work. And part of that includes the resurfacing of the parking lot, which I know a lot of people are going to be excited about there at the PAC in McDonough. He was also able to talk about an update or one of those procedural items that our board has to take action on, so we can receive some funding for one of the renovation projects. And that was an Oakland Elementary Resolution that the board would have to take action on. Now, another thing, we talk about next school year. Well, let's talk about two years from now and three years from now. Our board did take action on calendars from, that were presented and have been out for public view and comment. Mary Elizabeth, I know that there's some new additions to those calendars that people might be interested in, some more interaction with teachers throughout the course of the year, I believe.
Yeah, you know, we've committed to starting after August 1st and still concluding the school year before Memorial Day holiday. And we have preserved all of the holidays and breaks that our calendar has become accustomed to enjoying. And at the same time, there has been an introduction of early release days so that teachers and parents can convene for student conferences. And the real commitment of the Board of Education, that parents be informed in a variety of ways on the progress and successes, and also gaps in learning that their child is displaying in the classroom. And so, I think that this is just a reflection of our board's commitment to parents being a key partner in our child, children's education.
Yeah, you know, what's, what's also important to say, notice that, you know, when we put these out for public review and comment, we put a lot of stuff out for public review and comment. And we value the comments and the feedback that we receive from our community. And our board did take a lot of thoughts and, you know, feedback into consideration before making, you know, the, the move to approve these two calendars. And we like to, you know, get into a cycle where we can approve calendars ahead of time, you know, far enough in advance, because we know there are those families out there that, that need to make those decisions early. We think that these work best for, for the majority of our district. And so, we're excited to see what the 2021, 22 school year and 2022, 23 school year look like. But first things first, we get to round out this school year and then move on to, to the one that immediately follows. So, in addition to that, we heard from, you know, chief, you know, our chief leadership, School Leadership Officer, Mr. Kirk Trum, about our code of conduct that continues to be out there for, for review by our public. Mary Elizabeth, would you like to share a little bit about that process and where we are with that?
Sure. Our first draft of the code of conduct to support schools and students for next year was provided at the, at the, actually, the April board meeting. It has been out for public comment and review, and we've received several very insightful reflections that have caused there to be now a second draft of that code of conduct. So, the second draft was presented to the Board of Education with no action so that it could be put out for public review and comment for one more period of time. And it'll be brought before the Board of Education on June 8th to take action and adopt the code of conduct for the next school year. And while we're thinking about what the board adopts, there was a collection of policies under our comprehensive policy review that continues to be a part of the board's rigorous work on the infrastructure of policies in our organization. And one of the board's reform policies that they together began working on in September of 2019 was a promotion and retention policy. Now, that promotion and retention policy has been out for public review for the past month and was voted and adopted as our new promotion and retention policy to serve heading into the next school year. That's really going to increase the consistency of practices from classroom to classroom and school to school, and to really ensure to our community that promoting from one grade level to another really is a meaningful and substantive process. Policy work and the code of conduct, very important backbones for our organization and the board's attention.
Without a doubt. And so, you know, a lot of that was, has taken place. There's another set of policies that are out for, for public review and comment now, so you can always click on that tab on our website to take you there. And if you see anything that you'd like to weigh in on, please do. It, it takes a community to make our school system the best it can be, and we appreciate all the feedback that you guys are able to provide. One more big item that was presented as a part of our business session, and that was, you know, kind of the process that's been underway to provide a good benefits provider for our employees. We highly value our employees, and we want to give them the best package to make it, you know, continue to make our district the best place to work for, you know, whatever job classification you're in. And Valerie Sue Smith, our Chief Human Resources Officer, was able to kind of share the process that's been done remotely to work through who our next benefits provider would be. And I think we've landed on, on a company that should provide just a wealth and breadth of, you know, various options for our, our many employees. And Mary Elizabeth, I think that's, it's something that's exciting to hear for, for that group.
Yes, our Board of Education really believes that we've got to take care of our employees so that our employees are the best in, in class and best in field for our kids and our families. And this employee broker being accepted by the Board of Education is, in addition to the already provided state health benefits, so nothing changes with state health benefits for our employees, that's a state requirement. But all of the additional benefits as an employee of the organization, vision, dental, health savings accounts, and everything beyond our state health benefits, well, now that will be provided by a broker who is capable of lowering the cost and increasing the availability of benefit options for our employees. Additionally, our board has been committed to providing each employee a total compensation profile, which shows each employee the investment that the Board of Education makes beyond what they see in a paycheck. And so, this particular company, Alexander and Company, will be capable of doing that. So JD, it was an important investment in employees, which is an important investment in our kids. We, we went right into a proclamation, I'm sorry, a resolution to proclaim May 22nd, 2020, a day to celebrate the Class of 2020. Our Board of Education had so many comments that they wanted to share related to our Class of 2020 graduates. And we want to invite you, our, our community members, our neighbors, our friends, our business partners, community partners, civic partners, elected officials, join us in, in celebrating on May 22nd, 2020, a day to celebrate the Class of 2020. Put a, go purple, put a purple bow on your mailbox or your door, or use purple sidewalk chalk, or wear purple, or put purple lights in your windows or signs in your windows, and make it a moment where any senior who passes by knows that they are well-loved and respected and celebrated in this season. It was pretty interesting to reflect on our board members' awareness and concern for our Class of 2020.
Yeah, and of course, you know, this is not something that we're doing in isolation. We've reached out to our, our municipalities to help us out in celebrating, as well as our Chamber of Commerce and the county government. And we're hoping that they'll join in by providing their own proclamations for these seniors. It's a class to remember, you know, for all the right reasons. And our class, you know, while it's not what they envisioned 13 years ago when they started their educational journey in kindergarten, that this would be the ending, it is, and they're going to make it, you know, as fantastic as we possibly can. They are, and we are in honor of them. We want you to take part, and if you get a chance on social media, please do so. Use the hashtag #GoPurpleHCSClassof2020, but also you can use the hashtag, you know, #CelebrateTheClassOf2020Day, that works as well. We just want you guys to make sure that you give the Class of 2020 the great send-off that they deserve. Now, that kind of wrapped up our business session. We did have a couple of other items that we, we unfortunately, our, our previous recap didn't get to share out, but we had some, some new members, you know, that, that joined as far as the administrative team around our school district. And then we also had to say goodbye, unfortunately, to some of our valued team members as well. So, Mary Elizabeth, you want to share those individuals that will be joining, and then of course, that unfortunately will be leaving?
That's right. It is really sad to say goodbye to some impactful leaders in our organization who are advancing their professional career and going on to do great things. We want to wish the best to Dr. Kurt Miller, who has been our Coordinator of Athletics, and who has really built an incredible athletic program here in Henry County with several state title pursuits in, in several sport categories and, and really a strong athletic opportunity for our scholar athletes. Also want to say farewell to Mr. Darren Green, who has served as our Coordinator of Security. Obviously, his role in the post-February 2018 time period has been so vital, and we are proud in Henry County of the campus improvements, as well as safe and secure learning environment that we have designed and developed under his leadership. And we've also had the opportunity to say goodbye to an Assistant Principal at Toffah Elementary School, Anisha Wilson, who is moving on to do great things in her education profession. And we have welcomed some new leadership roles, some new team members. Congratulations to Beatrice, Beatrice Holmes, who is a new Assistant Principal at Rock Spring Elementary School. And congratulations to Allison Mayo, a new Assistant Principal at Locust Grove Middle School. You know, I'm also excited to announce that the Board of Education is launching a Henry Reads campaign. And starting this week, our Board of Education will be featured with a Read Aloud that is digitally collected and curated. And we're going to invite lots of community members, maybe even you would want to contribute to doing a Read Aloud and contributing to our digital collection so that we send our kids off into summer with a lot of reading resources from our community, community leaders. And the last thing I just want to say is that May is an exciting time of year in public education. It is the season where the energy and excitement is palpable, and anyone connected to, to education simply loves the month of May. But no doubt, this May is different. And I had a chance to write a letter to our seniors that acknowledged that Friday, May 8th, there was a bell that rang at 3:15 PM in every one of our high schools. And the hallways were empty, the classrooms were empty, parking lots were empty. That's not how it's supposed to be, and that's not how we dreamt it to be for them. That's not how it's supposed to be and that's not how we dreamt it to be for them. But that final bell still marks a moment of remarkable accomplishment. Not only for our seniors on May 8th, but for all of our students on May 15th. When we say farewell to a great school year, the perseverance and the resolve that our youth have shown us as we've transitioned into this uncertain chapter is inspiring. It gives us hope and we thank you for being the leaders that you are in this very moment that has been thrown upon us. This final bell on Friday, the 15th wraps up the school year for us. And we want to thank our teachers and our leaders and all of our support professionals for wrapping their arms around our kids and for our partners in education, our parents and our families who have made this transition to end our school year strong, even better than it would have been. So thank you for a great year and JD, I think we're getting close to being able to wrap this up.
Without a doubt, we appreciate everybody as always for tuning in. We want to remind people that, you know, during this, you know, new operation for our board meetings, we did have to spend one of our favorite moments, which was the inspiration that usually is provided by our students live and in person. But we still have the art of hope that we were able to feature this month. So please take a look at that. And if you'd like to contribute, please do so. There are options for you to do that. We did recognize, of course, this month, our school nutrition employees, our nurses and clinic aides. And of course, Teacher Appreciation Week was this month. And it was actually School PR Professionals Day this month as well. So we want to recognize all of those categories of employees and classifications for the outstanding work that they do. This wraps it up for the month of May. What an incredible month. And it really wraps up the school year. So the next time we'll be coming to you in June, we'll be in the throes of summer. So thank you all very much for your hard work, your dedication to helping us make it through these past couple of months of school. It has no doubt been a monumental lift by everybody and we cannot say thank you enough. We hope that the summer brings much-needed rest and relaxation for you and your family and a safe summer at that. So for myself and of course Superintendent Mary Elizabeth Davis, we thank you for joining us for this board meeting recap for the month of May. We'll see you next time.
As is the case with most board meetings, there's a lot more information that you're able to witness being there in person or watching the full version on demand that we're unable to bring to you here in this very short board meeting recap. The links to those presentations and videos can be found in the description section directly below this video.